The microphone's not on yet, is it? It's on? Okay.
Just sitting down.
Yeah.
Just sitting down. Thank you. Yeah. Perfect. I guess so. She does. Sleeping in that. Sleeping. Sleeping. Looking for it. I'm feeling. Oh, it's funny. You want to read the speech? Yeah. Take another one. Uh. Okay. Five minutes. Yeah. What? Look at your. Right. That's not strange. Yeah. You are. I did that. Do that. I started over the first.
Everyone, please rise to the flag salute.
Settle. Ready? Go again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. The time is now 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was pub- Thank you. We have executive session minutes for May 7th, 2024, May 21st, 2024, and June 18th, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye for the 7th and the 18th. I was not here on the 21st while I'm staying.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes. Thank you.
Uh, we, we have a proclamation on this evening. Uh, I believe Commissioner Petrako organized this proclamation, but he had a, a family emergency and is unable to be here, so I'll read it on, in, in his stead. Uh, the proclamation states, whereas the Nutley Community Partners for Peace stands for the advancement of understanding, tolerance, and solidarity among all people locally and globally. And whereas Nutley Community Partners for Peace recognizes the importance of artistic expression as a tool to advance a culture of peace and unity. And whereas the Nutley Community Partners for Peace's project, 20, 20, Peace's 2024 project was a poetry initiative inspired by Joseph Fort Newton's quote, "People are all lonely because they build walls instead of bridges." And whereas Nutley High School students demonstrated interest and resolved to strengthen their artistic talents by continuing their time to taking a masterclass in poetic and musical expression. And whereas a result of this masterclass, students submitted poems that expressed their personal interpretations of peace as it stands in the wor- in their world. And whereas the Nutley Community Partners for Peace appreciate the sincere efforts of these students and the support of the Nutley Educational Foundation and Nutley High School's teachers and administrator and administration. And now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Nutley High School students involved in the Partners for Peace Walls and Bridges poetry project should be rewarded with recognition for their efforts and honored for their expressions of peace throughout music and poetry. Is, is anyone here this evening? Whoa. Okay. Well, uh, congratulations again. This is a, a, a great achievement. Uh, moving on, uh, reports, uh, Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Mayor, I have a monthly progress reports for various months for TPW.
And Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of May 2024.
Thank you. Uh, bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for July 2nd, 2024, public affairs, $141,307.93. Revenue and finance, $2,957,386.12. Public safety, $95,474.24. Public works, $146,863.13. Parks and public property, $910,990.97. Water utility, $48,671.26. Payroll as of Friday, June 21st, 2024, regular payroll total, $949,088.85. Overtime payroll total, $41,658.32. Total payroll, $990,747.17. For a grand total of $5,291,440.82.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a public comment on agenda items only. Uh, this is public comment on agenda items only. Uh, seeing no one, uh, Board of Commissioners announcements. We'll start with Commissioner Evans.
Nothing, Mayor, other than, um, great wishes for celebrating our birthday on July 4th and freedom of our country.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone, in particular Commissioner Petrako and the Public Safety Department, uh, for helping us coordinate and pull off another great summer festival on Franklin Avenue and all of the other commissioners and the mayor for supporting the effort and for pitching in where they can. And also happy birthday, Amber.
It was a great night. Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Mayor, just, uh, we have electronics recycling on Saturday from nine to one in Porking Lot, uh, nine and seven.
Thank you. And, and of course, it is our nation's birthday on July 4th. We'll have our annual Fourth of July celebration, uh, and that is a, uh, effort done by the entire Board of Commissioners. It's a team effort to, to really put on the great display of patriotism that we have every year. Uh, ordinance introductions. Uh. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, ordinance number 3559. An ordinance providing for the purchase and installation of related services extending the municipal fiber line, fiber line network to include municipal parks on Hancock's Avenue and in, and by the township of Nutley, uh, from the county of Essex, New Jersey appropriating $70,000. Uh, this is a fully funded capital. It does not, uh, uh, require any issuance of new debt. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise the Nutley Sun together with an ord- with a notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance, the final passage by the Board of Commissioners, be held at its second reading on, uh, June-
August 6th.
On, excuse me. I'm sorry, Alani, what date?
August 6th.
August 6th. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, before I vote, just to, uh, to add on to what Commissioner Evans has already said, we have Wi-Fi at the American Little League, uh, off of Bloomfield Avenue at one end of town. This will give us Wi-Fi at the East Little League and will also provide Wi-Fi servers for a portion of that end of town. And also, I believe it's the, uh, the maintenance facility that the Board of Education has on Memphis. So this is a part of a, a progression that, that we're following to Wi-Fi the entire town, so we can live stream, uh, different events, sporting events, civic events, school events, and what have you.
So, so just if Dad's traveling and can't get to the baseball game?
Dads, grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, uh, we know people are busy. This, this will bring it right into their living.
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner. I vote aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Uh, yes, on introduction only. Uh, ordinance is on second reading, uh, and public hearings. Uh, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, uh, the first ordinance is 3554. Uh, this is a capital bonding ordinance, uh, that, uh, uh, we do every year, uh, to, uh, which is associated with improving, uh, various aspects of our equipment and property in the township of Nutley, uh, appropriating, uh, $2.6 million in bonding, uh, approximately two point, uh, uh, 2.593, almost $2.6 million, uh, uh, when, uh, when we do so at our next, uh, bond offering.
Uh, at this time, I've opened the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number 3554, please approach the mic and state your name for the record, please. Uh, seeing none?
Move the close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The, uh, next ordinance is an additional, uh, amount, uh, uh, for similar purposes in the amount of, uh, $1,932,000.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance number 3555. Uh, anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please approach the mic and state your name for the record, please.
Move the close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And the last ordinance that I have is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My last ordinance, uh, 3556, uh, in, in the amount of $285,000. It relates to, uh, capital, uh, funding for the water utility.
Uh, the, I'm, I'm opening the, uh, public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to be heard on 3556, please approach the mic and state your name for the record.
Move the close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Evans, let's stick with you with resolutions.
Okay. Um, my first ordinance, number 70, 17624, uh, was for, uh, issuing estimated third quarter tax bills. Uh, however, this order, this resolution is tabled, uh, because we've been working with, uh, the Essex County Board of Taxation, and we feel confident that, uh, given the state's adoption of the budget, that we will get a certified tax rate, uh, next week and will be able to issue regular bills. Uh, holding this ordinance saves, uh, the township approximately $15,000 to avoid the paper costs and mailing associated with a third quarter bill. So this one's tabled. Uh, 177 dash 24. Uh, whereas NJSA 48 colon 5 dash 4 requires the governing body of every local unit to have made an annual audit of its books and, and accounts and financial transactions. Whereas the annual report of the audit for the year 2023 has been filed by the registered municipal accountant with municipal, the municipal clerk pursuant to NJSA 48 colon 5 through 6, and a copy has been received by each member of the governing body. Whereas the, uh, whereas the local finance board has promulgated NJAC 5 colon 36 dot 5, a regulation requiring that the governing body of each municipality shall by resolution certify to the local finance board of the state of New Jersey, all, that all members of the governing body have reviewed as a minimum, this section of the annual audit entitled General Comments and Recommendations, whereas members of the governing body have personally reviewed as a minimum the annual report and specifically the sections of the annual report entitled General Comments and Recommendations, as evidenced by the group affidavit form of the governing body attached here too. Whereas such resolution of certification shall be adopted by the governing body no lo- no later than 45 days after the receipt of the annual audit pursuant to NJAC 5 colon 30 dash, uh, 6 dot 5. Whereas all members of the governing body have received and familiarized themselves with at least the minimum requirements of the local finance board of the state of New Jersey as stated, uh, for said and have subscribed to the affidavit as provided by the local finance board, whereas failure to comply with the, uh, uh, comply with the promulgations of the local finance board of the state of New Jersey may subject a member of the local fin- governing body to a pen- to the penalty provisions. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby states that it has complied with NJAC 5 colon 30, but 6 dot 5, and does hereby submit a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to said board to show evidence of said compliance. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Yes, uh, the, I took a look at the audit and there's, uh, everything is in great shape. Uh, I was, I was pleased that, to see that they're very limited in terms of the recommendations, uh, which shows that we're in great financial shape, uh, and so I, I vote aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of an independent professional planner, uh, with expertise with the preparation of zoning ordinance revisions to form into a formal regulatory zoning ordinance to be retained on a non-fair and open basis pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40A colon 11 dot 5. Whereas Paul Ricky of Ricky Planning, 177 Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Heights, New Jersey, possesses the requisite education experience and licensure to provide the services at a cost of $135 an hour, not to exceed $2,500. And whereas the anticipated term, this contract is July 1st, uh, through December 31st, 2024. Whereas funds are available in account 401, uh, 219205, and have been certified by the chief, uh, financial officer. Whereas, uh, Paul Ricky of Ricky Planning has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that a contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes the mayor and municipal clerk to enter into a contract on a non-fair and open basis in accordance with NJSA 48 colon 11 dash 5, with Ricky Planning at the stated rate of $135, not to exceed $2,500. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution authorizes the, um, excuse me, treasurer, uh, to over, uh, to refund an overpayment of a UCC fine in the amount of $2,000. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments to recreation programs in the amounts listed below. The folks at 500, 584 Brittany Circle for Camp Nutley in the amount of $600 for the 2024 year, and the folks at 100 Warren Street, again for Camp Nutley in the amount of $200 for 2024. I move resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for 2024 Coiman Avenue roadway improvement project, Bloomfield Avenue to the Bloomfield border and the Township of Nutley to be received by the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers Township 401 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, at 11:00 AM prevailing time, which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for sewer line camera inspection, cleaning, and relining in the Township of Nutley to receive by the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers Township 401 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, at 11:00 AM prevailing time, which time they will be open and read and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Petrako has only one on for this evening, so I'll, I'll read it in addition to mine. I'll read his first. This is resolution number 184 dash 24. Whereas the Township of Nutley, the township is a municipal corporation of the state of New Jersey, whereas the county of Essex County is a county of the state of New Jersey, and whereas the county of Essex recognizes the need to further assist our residents to reduce opioid use and support individuals in their recovery. And whereas the Division of Community Health Services would like to promote different approach in changing the behavior of individuals with substance use disorder who are involved in the criminal justice system at the municipal level with, within the municipality. And whereas after careful consideration, the parties determined that a cooperative approach to implement the RISE initiative program, a voluntary substance use disorder, continuum of care and services, referral and intervention strategy for municipal residents charged with nonviolent crimes, would offer the parties and, and effective and efficient means for providing these services. Whereas the county authorized shared service agreements with participating municipalities for the RISE initiative program, hereafter referred to as the program, for a term of three years from January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. And whereas after a review of the benefits and potential success of the program, the parties have determined to continue the program. And whereas to continue with the program, the parties have decided to enter into a shared service agreement to authorize the county to procure a vendor on behalf of the township for this purpose. And whereas the cost of the, for the professional services performed pursuant to this agreement shall be paid by the county. Whereas the term of the agreement will be paid for a period of three years commencing on, or about July 2nd, 2024, and terminating on December 31st, 2026. And whereas the, this agreement is authorized pursuant to New Jersey statutes annotated 40A colon 65 dash 1 at sequence, Uniform Shared Services and Consolidation Act permits two or more local units to enter into an agreement for any service, which any party to the agreement is empowered to render within its jurisdiction. And whereas the parties agree that their mutual public purposes and their best interests will be promoted by the execution, delivery of shared services agreement pursuant to the powers conferred by the Uniform Shared Services and Consolidation Act. Whereas the sharing of these services will benefit the taxpayers of both the township and the county by increasing the efficiency of service and decreasing the costs. Whereas all other terms and conditions of the agreement shall be reviewed and approved by the Office of the County Council. And whereas after review of the benefits and potential successes of the program, the parties have determined to continue the program. And now therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, hereby authorizes the proper county officials to execute all documents necessary to effect shared service agreements with all interested county municipalities for Ri- the RISE initiative program for the term stated herein at no cost to the participating municipalities. Uh, I move his resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Uh, moving on to the resolutions I have on this evening. Uh, this is, the first one I have is resolution number 180 dash 24, and this is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Uh, this is a resolution of the Township Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizing a change order for the professional services contract with Inglisino, Inglisino, Webster, Wicca Scala, and Taylor LLC as counsel for the township of Nutley concerning Special Development Council. Whereas as more fully addressed in resolution number 281 dash 23, the Township of Nutley has entered a professional services contract with Inglisino, Webster, Wicca Scala, Taylor LLC as counsel for the township regarding Special Development Council. Whereas change order number one is needed in the amount of $50,000 to continue these special development legal services for the remainder of 2024. Whereas the funds are available from account number four dash 01 dash 226 dash 205 in the amount of $50,000, has been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is hereby authorized and approved in the amount of $50,000. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and notice in accordance to the local public contracts law of New Jersey, and the form attached here too shall be published in the Nutley Sun, and so moved.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Uh, the next one I have on this evening is, uh, is one of the continued benefits of having our own health officer. Uh, we are applying for a grant of $168,000 and some change. Uh, whereas the Township of Nutley has applied for a grant in the amount of $168,049 through the New Jersey Association of County and City Health Officials with the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health, from which funds will be used to sustain local public health infrastructure by implementing salary reimbursements for designated personnel and create long-term infrastructure improvements while planning for health, equity, diversity, inclusion, and accessibility. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the county of Essex, State of New Jersey formally approves the grant application for sustaining local public health infrastructure for fiscal years 2024 through fiscal year 2026. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. And the last resolution I have on for this evening is resolution number 18524. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation, has provided tax clearance certificates and said licensees are qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by the New Year's, New Jersey statutes annotated Title 33 and regulations promulgate, promulgated thereunder, as well as current and local ordinance and conditions consistent with Title 33 for each establishment listed below for this renewal period. Whereas these establishment, establishments have been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, and Police Department of the Township of Nutley are in satisfactory condition. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, of the renewal of plenary retail consumption licenses, plenary retail distribution licenses, and club licenses be granted to the following licensees effective July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2020, 25. Uh, be it further resolved that the municipal clerk be and is hereby authorized to sign and issue said license certificates for the licensing period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. Uh, the only one on for this evening is the American Legion Post number 7024 Franklin Avenue, the club license. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. At this time, I'm going to open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, uh, please approach the mic and state your name.
Janice Rubel.
Hello.
Hi. I'd like to specifically, can you hear me? I'd like to specifically address this to the mayor and commissioners as they could be instrumental in empowering an amendment to an existing ordinance. In March of this year, I sent emails and snail mail letters to Commissioner and now Mayor Kelly, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Scarpelli, Commissioner Patraco and Commissioner Tucci in concern of two point five yearly rent increase for senior tenants in Nutley. Contacting them was suggested by Mr. Kuchta. I noticed that Montclair and East Orange have instituted that amendment. There are not many senior tenants, but those that rent oftentimes encounter a hardship with a yearly five percent increase. Most seniors are on a fixed income and truly need this amendment to be passed. I'm aware that the Rent Control Board can change the ordinance or at the very least introduce and make suggestions. I'm also aware that the governing body can introduce and vote to amend with a majority of three of five votes for A twenty-three ninety-one, chapter eighteen of Title Two Way Rent Control. I'm asking you to help senior citizens in this town by introducing an amendment to the rent control ordinance which helps ease the financial burden of senior citizens over sixty-five years and which would include a lower rent increase, two point five percent for seniors. The next step would be to have it adopted via public hearings or advertised in the paper, and then the majority of the vote lies within you, the commissioners and the mayor. Thank you for taking the time to hear my appeal, along with several concerned parties about the amendment to the rent control ordinance.
Thank you for coming this evening. I think I can speak on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners is that we do everything we can to make this town affordable for everyone, especially our seniors, and nothing breaks my heart more than when I hear especially a senior, someone who's lived here seventy, eighty years, say that they can no longer afford to live here, and that's a shame because they built this community. And this community rests on their shoulders. And I did receive your your letters, and what we as the Board of Commissioners have done is we're referring it to the Rent Leveling Board for their advice and counsel, and they have their own attorney who could recommend some some additional action that we can take based on their own due diligence. And if, did anyone else want to address the comments?
Well, hopefully it'll end up with the commissioners and you will take a vote on it.
Yeah.
You know, that can happen. Amendment can be made, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all seniors except the mayor.
I'm outnumbered.
And a couple of us are well over sixty-five, too.
I hope to be there with you guys one day. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Patricia Little, and I'm blessed to be able to say that within the last year I received an apartment in the senior building on Seven Williams Street. However, prior to that, I lived in apartments on Church Street. The rent there, it became higher than what I was receiving in social security and retirement benefits. I did approach the Rent Control Board. My meeting with them was unsuccessful. And because Janice is mentioning them, Mr. Kuchta discouraged me from trying to get something done in this town for seniors. I recognize that we are all at that age, and but I'm wondering, for instance, Mr. Scarpelli and Mayor Kelly, Mr. Tucci, Mr. Evans, I wonder if you are renters, if you are tenants, if you are landlords. I'm not asking for the answers to that right now. However, it is really, really important at this time for the township to consider the seniors who are tenants in these landlord controlled buildings. Unfortunately, on Church Street, I had a sink that was as old as the building, which was built when I graduated from Nutley High with Yolanda in nineteen seventy-one. I could not get them or Mr. Kuchta to replace a sink that in summertime would have bugs come up out of it. It's possible that people don't bring these issues to your attention. And I recognize that it's harsh to have to try to deal with the younger, the opioid crisis, but then to stretch all the way up to those of us who are beyond the age of sixty-five. So I ask you, please, to take into consideration Ms. Rubel's thoughts because the tenants in this town, they need to be able to use their social security, their pension to go even to the shop, right? You know, to not have to worry that their rent is going to be raised to over eighteen hundred dollars a month. So thank you very much for listening, and I'm grateful to all of you for the work you do for the town. And congratulations to Mayor Kelly on your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'm going to close the the public comment portion of the meeting. Mr. Bruno, do we have a need for executive session? Do I have a motion for executive session?
Move it.
Second?
Thank you. We're a section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye, and we'll be conducting no more business this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second?
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The time is seven forty-one.